I mean, I see it probably.
All right, three good things.
Plus it's USBC.
I can't make any promises, but if we can continue moving at a brisk pace, there is a possibility that we get out at like four, five, seven, five, five.
You're awesome, Dan.
We can, it just depends on, we have some guests coming in, so we're going to depend on their schedule as well later on, so, but we will see. It's a long day, I understand that, it's tough to be engaged and energized the entire day. It's important that we do it, but we get out of here as early as possible. With that, let's move on to our third item on this voucher. It's called Third Item on HRCC.
Sidewalk Program?
Good job. Matt Bogard, I'll be very clear about that. And Derek Schuler, you are up. Was this the sidewalk program, is that what you're doing?
It is, yeah.
I believe so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, as, as every, the discussion for the last couple of years has been the state of our sidewalks. We know that in many cases they are, we have issues with, I can't name it. They're crumbling, they're flat, they're being heaved up by trees. So, we have begun the process last year of bringing in HRCC to do a sidewalk audit. And so we selected one of the sections, the desert city section, I think you...
Friday, right?
Fridays or Section 5. We're trying to do a little better job explaining those, but this will be the southwest corner.
Southwest corner of the city, yeah. And so we actually had a representative from HRCC walk the architectural sidewalks in that area, and then eventually log flag by flag, what, any issues that he saw, anything that he came across that would need to be either near term, long term, or generally need to be repaired over the course of the next sidewalk program. So, we've got that data back now. While we did see some areas that are absolutely of immediate concern, there is some projections now on what those costs would be. Derek, do you want to kind of go through some of the conditions that we would have had, that we would have come across that would be near term and long term?
Sure. So, what they did is, we've got some highlights here that we can kind of go through. So, often when you start to dwell into this, I think it's important to first look at what are we responsible for as a city? And what we are responsible for are our buildings and thus the sidewalks in front of our buildings and facilities and parking lots and other things. Again, sidewalk responsibility is the responsibility of the property owner along that frontage. So, we have city-owned properties. HRCC looked at those, and the first bullet point that you see there, we've got a cost of around $250,000 to address just those, those issues. So, this would be City Hall, Parks and Rec, APW, parking lot, wherever it may be. Again, that's a general cost, but that's just something to keep in mind, because as we unroll, as we roll this out, I think we need to be thinking about, well, do we need to get our own house in order first before we start doing that? That seems like a logical step to me, but that's something that we need to speak, talk about. The second bullet point, repair and place sidewalks in Section 5. So, that's a section that HRCC went through. And I think we were a bit taken aback by the scope of, of this. So, HRCC is estimating for the Friday section to basically break all the sidewalk. I'm just, we're looking at a $1.2 million cost. That's construction, that's engineering, that's, that's all of those components. But obviously, do a little math, multiply it by five, you know, the five sections, this is a major, a major issue. We just went for a road milledage and, and, you know, this is just sidewalks. I mean, it's, the scope of this is significant, and I guess that's the point to be made here. So, the other, that third bullet point is something we talked about, because it's always a hot topic about city trees in the right of way. And fair to say, the majority of our sidewalk concerns are probably related to the right-of-way trees. This is a struggle that any community has, where you have a plethora of mature trees. And no surprise, about half of those deficiencies in a rough context are related to a city tree. So, we often get the call, and I'm sure Tim and Building Department, because they have a hand in this too, but there, we often get a call and somebody's saying, "A city tree is lifting my sidewalk, and when are you going to come out and fix it?" And then we have to have the discussion with them about, well, the practice and policy in Berkeley is, whether that's a city tree doing the issue or not, you're responsible for it. And then they might say, "Well, 15 years ago, when you had the last program, and you made me do this, and now it's happening again." And how we try to explain it is, this is the balance between having trees in a community and having a walkable community. And yes, we could go and cut down every tree that's walking the sidewalk, and that can be done, but that's not the direction we want to go. But it is important to note that last little section there, that there has been a movement where cities have decided to take on the responsibility of costs associated with right-of-way trees. I believe the latest one that I heard was Ferndale has basically decided to do that. Now, what does that mean? I mean, we're still all the city. I mean, somebody still has to pay for that, right? I mean, so, so what's that new revenue stream? How do we, how do we create that? I mean, it doesn't really change a lot from, from our end, still got to find the money, and the city decides to pay for it, well, I'll not pay for it. But there has been a movement to that. And I want to say, I want to say Beverly Hills was one that decided to make that change a few years ago. And then, I think the most recently one that I read in a Libra talk or something was Ferndale, kind of almost at the last minute of getting their program rolling again, said, you know, "We're going to cover the costs." So, I have no idea how they decided to fund that, or to... But that's an issue. That, that's an issue that we struggle with now, and that we will continue to struggle with, is the right-of-way tree component of it, because we have that argument. And I'll be honest, it's not an easy one to argue. It's, you know, it is an easy one for them, and it's hard when we're on the other side to defend it. It's, it's, it's very difficult.
One of the data points in the walking statement was to actually specifically log tree, or the last sidewalk lifted by trees. And so we do have a count of what those were.
Is that in obvious cases? I mean, they probably, you can see if there's a tree right there, and they were leading to it, and prompting it up, but I imagine there's probably other cases. Any of them might be difficult to ultimately discern in every situation if the tree was responsible until you have the time to get out. It's probably tough to know.
I don't, I'm not sure about that. I don't know.
I think a good majority of you, you get a pretty good sense of it, you know, because in many cases, the integrity of the slab itself is okay, right? It just, it just has lifted that, get that faulting. And so, it tells the story pretty clear, if there's a tree nearby, that something underneath there is, is lifting it. Whether it was caught or trimmed at the last assessment, it's on the second. So, and I know that there has been, oh, go ahead. This kind of leads into some newer revelations, but if any of you were following the Royal Sidewalk story, and they actually went out for a milledage, and this, this does appear to be one of the new ranges in sidewalks, is moving forward from assessment to millages. And Royal Oak touted this as a way that, and I've just been here too, but in a way that they can say, sidewalks, you know, the benefit of sidewalks is everybody, right? And so we all are, have an interest in it, and so if we just do a milledage, then we can just go around and do it, and we're not doing an assessment, because assessments are expensive, controversial, no matter what. And so I'm sure Royal Oak, I read some news articles, when they were going through their recent assessment, and they did a lot of work, thought, you know, "Next time, let's think about doing it a little different way," and exploring village, while the village failed pretty clearly. So, the residents spoke, and so that did not go through. So, I don't know what it means for them as far as next steps. But I thought, going into it, that that was a, maybe a more creative way of handling it. Now, what does that mean for jurisdiction? What does that mean for, you know, when somebody calls and talks a code about sidewalk that they have an issue with, and how that, you know, I don't know. So, if we were to change how, our current practice, it would mean changing a lot of things, and then people coming out saying, "Well, wait a minute, I just paid for it. When do I get my refund?" So, you have all of that, and all of those things in motion as well, so... But I, I've seen enough, I think Clausen, Clausen wrote this one as well.
Clausen left a fee-based system where they were, on your water bill, it was you pay an extra $20 to $35, I think, $25 to $30 every year. And that was supposed to, that was, they took the ownership of it, they used those funds to repair, it needs reporting to them. They fell so far behind in that program that they actually ended up going for, they had to ask the residents to bond their sidewalks in 2017. I think they went to, never looked last year on that. And I don't recall...
I don't think so. I, I want to say though they, theirs may have passed, that they may have gone to more of a milledage-based system before, but I, we have to check.
But as, you know, as we've seen on the Friday section alone, you're talking about $1.2 million. Our two mills that we just assessed for infrastructure that was passed by the voters is likely to generate about $1.14 million annually. So, we're talking about more than two mills now, two additional mills, to fund those costs alone just for sidewalks. Over the next, however, and trying to ramp up in enough time to actually get those done, and it'll be a short period of time too, it's going to be difficult for us. So, I, as Derek says, there's a lot of people looking at going towards a, for a milledage on this. Ultimately, I don't, I'm not sure if it's the best course of action for the city of Berkeley, though.
Any other alternatives, aside from milledage, special assessment, or body?
You know, we did, that, we did talk about that hybrid program a few years ago, and some council members were part of that, and others were not. And I think ultimately, from a legal standpoint, the decision was made that maybe that isn't the best option. I just want to throw that back out there, because I know it was a closed study session, but that was something that was, was referenced, where maybe the city facilitated a bid, and had the contractor on board that residents could take advantage of that bid to do the work. It seems less forced and more trying to work with them to help resolve the situation where they're ultimately still responsible for the cost. But I know at that time, a few years ago, it was decided that that, for whatever reason, wasn't the route. But I mean, that, that has been thrown out there as well, to be more of a facilitator instead of forcing it. It's not without its concerns either. I can see a scenario where everybody's for it, and then once you do it, and the buck stops here, where you're looking for the money, all of a sudden, everybody's backing away and saying maybe that that isn't, isn't for them. So, it's not without its, its issues as well.
And the third option up there, that's up here, is just to continue the practice of making this code enforcement issue. Whereas sidewalks are reported, they're deficient, there's, there's strip hazards, the resident upfront gets the notice, and it's, the owners put on them to have it repaired and replaced, you know, as soon as, whatever timeline we give them. Part of the issue that we're having there is people are having a difficult time finding contractors that are willing to work at two and three slides of slabs at a time. And when they do, they do it, and the cost far exceeds what specials, what they were going to pay on a special assessment. And special assessment allows them to basically finance it over a couple of years through tax dollars at essentially a very, very low rate home. But that is a third option up there, so we could, continue to use this as a code enforcement issue.
All right, so before we move to timing, let's spend some time talking about what we've already heard, and get some input from council and anybody else who wants to be in on this. So, the first we talked about, or at least last slide, was city responsibility if it is from a tree that's in the city's right of way. What are thoughts, just initial thoughts right now from council on, on the city taking on that frozen kind of stuff?
Ideally, I'd love that. Practically, I don't know. So...
It's been 15 years since the last assessment?
That's my understanding, approximately 15 years.
Okay, so, you know, I did some quick math, you know, if we averaged that out, you know, the sustained amount, you know, it'd be... For, for the tree-related sidewalk maintenance alone, it would be $200,000 a year, just all parking it. But, you know, so, it's a significant amount.
Other council feedback? Jack?
I've got one resident that's bugging me, because he's got a city tree-related problem. And he got an arborist to look at it, and the arborist said that the tree was not planted correctly, it was planted not deep enough, it was too high. He goes back to the city and said, "You guys planted it, you planted it wrong. Why aren't you going to fix it?" And it's the same thing, we've got... What do we do about it? Don't know. Another problem. And we are guilty, that's what we... It was our fault, it was a lot before our time, but...
Let me rephrase, I don't think, I don't think the question here is... It's more of a feasibility question. Yes, of course, if we can, we can certainly do that. It's more of a feasibility of the impact to, to rest of things in our budget, where this could potentially prioritize, if there's a solution we want to look for. Any else to ask?
Maybe, maybe if the city can't fund the full amount, we can find a way to offer a discount on tree-related damage.
The idea of offering a discount for tree-related issues, it, it, sort of, that's one way of looking at a special assessment, actually. It's where the city fronts the, the engineering portions of it. We find the contractor, we can negotiate a lower rate by utilizing the counter to scale, and the resident really just shares the cost of the construction itself, and then they get that, to finance that over three years too. So, even if we go the direction of special assessment, that might be a good way to try and put some context around this, we talked about context of these issues earlier.
I have a question, so, if, to, actually, maybe it's to Matt. If we go that way, is the, are the engineers making the determination whether this was a tree-related sidewalk? Like, who decides that?
We asked a little over and we talked.
So, the entire city? Right now, we've done a portion, but if, if we're doing this as an overall plan, they would go through. So, I can't say, "Well, my sidewalk's janked up, but the engineers didn't say it was from a tree, so that's a, that's a whole separate thing? This is just tree-related sidewalk issues?"
Well, just the, the conversation we're having right now was just about, should the city be responsible, or pay the cost of repairing?
Yeah. Change rates is the other column?
Yeah, okay. But this is really all city sharing and engineers determined? Okay.
I think special assessment, the contractor's price is probably the best idea. And I remember when we did that, it was, and it wasn't too big, it was too big for three years. But I, I think that rather than being responsible for trees that you planted, although I understand what Jack's friend is saying. It happens with a lot of trees. And it's going to happen all over the city, because we have a tree planted there. On the other hand, the customer has to put that tree in many places, and bought that tree, and they planted it for them. So, we keep that at that rate.
Ross, just a quick question. Understanding that contractors are not going to want to do a single, so what's the average cost of replacing a, a single slab?
Oh, I, I can remember it being about, yeah, $150 a slab, you know? That, that might be a, a good perspective. I don't know that I would, you know, we want to double-check that with somebody. I mean, the last time I've been associated with a program, I mean, you're in that range.
Are, are prices per slab, or if we make a...
I'd be a homeowner.
If we tell a homeowner, say, "Go out and get these done."
Well, no, no, that'd be our price.
Bold numbers.
Economies of scale price, yeah. Economies of scale price with, you know, a significant sidewalk program. You know, I would think you'd be probably at a minimum $150 a slab, and it might be a little bit higher than that, what you could get on the open, I mean, that... Significantly higher. So, you know, there, there is some absolute cost savings with having those economies of scale. There's no question, in fact, that you're putting the upfront's work to do it. So, you know, there is a positive way to look at it as a resident too, who really wants to have it replaced, but now I can afford to do it, because the contractors aren't calling you back to do two slabs.
Right.
It's not even about giving a price, they're not going to call you back.
Yeah.
So, there's a benefit there.
Uh, thank you, yeah, this is, uh, this is awesome stuff. I, when I, if you guys remember, there's, many residents came to the microphone to talk about the importance of sidewalk safety. So, I think that's key to part of the value, you know, the benefit of living in this particular city and, you know, is the safety of the sidewalks. And so, I think from a principle perspective, obviously, having the sidewalks clean and safe and accessible is, is not really up for debate, at least in my mind. So, then it gets to how do we execute such a program? And I think we, we really need to keep it simple. Because if we open outdoors and little cracks of things, and all these exceptions, and you have some kind of a tribunal, like a dispute, you know, this and that, we don't kind of think that that's really an effective way to try to help achieve the objective of having safe sidewalks. So, I think that's a long-winded way of saying, I think we just, we, my idea is to, or my supporters around an assessment, just get in there, get it done, and really focus on the communication. Of course, you know, little fires, door hangers, and materials that get sent out, and leveraging the different channels that folks use through the TV, and social media, and newsletters, and things like that, to, to get the message out about why this is important, how it's happening, what they can do, questions they have, that kind of stuff. I think that's the principle that we're going to rally around, and we want to keep it as simple and focused as we can.
Initial thoughts, Bridget?
I have a question, Derek, you probably could answer this. When we do a sidewalk assessment, or when we have sidewalks replaced, is there a pool of contractors that you choose from? Do, it goes out to bid on guessing?
It would go out to bid.
And so, is it, do we consistently get the same one or two or three contractors? Or is it kind of...
You know, I would, I would expect this to be a grouping of three, four, or five contractors that would probably be bidding a job like this. You know, the sidewalk, you know, contractors tend not to be the same as a road paving group, so... But, and there's, there's probably three, four, or five out there that this would be up their alley, kind of a thing.
And then, would this be something where replacing areas at a time?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
We'd be, I think you'd want to look at, you know, keeping the areas small. That helps the contractor keep the prices down, and sort of you knock out sections, section by section. And I think you would, you know, given the cost that we saw before, keep in mind that if we do an assessment, the city has to front all of the money for this. So, think about that, as, as we're getting closer to budget season again, you know, as we figure out what we're going to do, we're going to have to front whatever we're going to spend, to be able to have that money on hand, and to be able to use. And then obviously, as, as the assessments come in, and we start to get the money back, but we have to be prepared to fund whatever scope that we want to bite off. And maybe that's, you know, taking Friday's section and dividing it into three? I mean, you know, we have to think about this, given the amount of money that we're talking about. And then we have to think of our city facilities as well, and how we want to interject that into our game plan. Again, you know, there's certainly some thought to getting our shit correct first, and then moving to that, or trying to do our shit, maybe with the stop and Fridays. Again, we have to kind of think about that too. I hate for us, I don't want us to get started and know that we've owned our own facilities, and it's not looking good either, and it's going to be a hard position to explain as well. But I think the communication, the council maker's standpoint, I mean, once we find out what we're going to do, we, we have to just, this message has to get out and be covered everywhere about, okay, we're taking the steps of going back to an assessment or whatever program, we, here's the lies, and here's the lens, and here's how we're planning to tackle it, and away we go. Because right now, many residents have no idea what's been done, or where we're going, and even though we have this list of locations and things to do, that doesn't mean tomorrow we can just go in and, I mean, we can just all imagine what, how private we'd be from that, as far as what's going to happen.
Jack?
I think what we need to do, I think a special assessment is the way to go, but I think what we need to do is we need to say, "Okay, the city can afford $250,000 a year upfront. Tell us how long it's going to take to do the whole city." Looking at sections, develop a timeline and say, "We're going to do these sections." Some, kind of like we do with the silver rail lining, you know? We're going to get this area, because if we're going to, if we're going to do this, we've got to explain to people what we're doing, and when we're going to do their area, or have some kind of a plan. And we need to decide on a reasonable amount of money, whether it's, you know, $200,000, or $2,000, $400,000, whatever we think we can do. And then develop a plan based on that, and then see if we can execute that plan.
And, um, looking at the longer term, let's just say for, say for a minute, it takes five years, with this first, you know, it may take long, but we'll just, let's just say five years. And do we then wait 10 or 15 years again, before we do it again? Or do we start in a program where we are just continually recycling through the city so that we never get this far behind? And, but that might be too aggressive, it might lose some of the economies of scales if the projects become too small, but...
The problem also is the cost of the assessment. Assessment is not cheap. So, if we start again in five years to do an assessment, we've got to still walk all those sidewalks and pay that guy all that time. So, we need to consider that also.
I think it's a good point, I mean, you know, you...
Yeah, it's a good point.
These costs because of that, that gap has something to do with it.
Yeah.
So...
Maybe 10 years.
But, yeah, so it may not be continuous. I think maybe we should also look at, decide what cadence we want to do. And, and we might not be able to do that upfront, because we do have this more significant, but then let's say, now that we're at ground zero, what can we do?
It goes back to, to being proactive. And when we've seen, we're trying to do that more, we're getting ahead, you know, the change in the water barrels, and how we're trying to be proactive and get ahead, and not get to a point where, okay, we have to do this, and then we're going to do this for 10 years, and guess what, 10 years, we're going to ask you again, and another, because we're going to need to do more. It's just trying to find out ways that we can plan long-term. One of the things that early on was not sacrificing short-term for long-term, and it's not being short-sighted with what we're doing, just saying, "Yeah, let's just square this up now, and we'll be good." But in five years, we have to do the same thing, or in 10 years, we have to do the same thing. So, when we're planning, especially projects like sidewalks, because our sidewalks aren't going away. We know the concrete isn't going to last forever, because we have a lot of trees, and that's important. But we need to be proactive in planning, how are we going to do this? And not, and it can't just all be, you know, a toss-up burden either, to the residents of, "Oh, no, we know the assessment's coming again this year, and a few years is going to come again." Because then anything else that we try and do in the interim, we're going to have trouble with, because we know there are going to be other things that come up. We already know there are things right now that we want to address again. So, I think we have to be very cognizant of what we're doing, and how we're planning, and how we actually build these things out. I don't know that it's either a milledage or assessment, or the city pays for it. I don't know if those are our only options. We need to be as creative as possible when we're planning long-term, having a strategy in place to make sure that we're doing something now, it's going to be sustainable, we're going to be proactive, we're going to have maintenance. It's the things that we've talked about before, but we need to really put that into action whenever we implement a solution, or look at a solution like this.
And, um, just going back to trees briefly, you know, I, yeah, I don't know that we can afford to pay for a tree to cause damage, but I do know some people will not plant trees because it will impact their sidewalk. So, you know, if we had that magic pot of money, you know, that we were talking about before, and that would be something that would result in more trees in the city, probably, but I don't know how we get there. I do wonder if, when we're repairing ones that were tree damaged, if we can do that crazy, you know, swerve around the tree so that it's longer before it gets damaged again.
Our new trees that we're planting now are better suited for right-of-way. We haven't, that hasn't changed for us for long.
Yeah, that changed. They've looked at those tree species and things, that's been here for a while, you know? I mean, you still have the old trees that are going to do what they're going to do as long as they're healthy. do, and as long as they're healthy, we're not going to move them, right? So they will continue to do the slabs as time goes on.
Now, when a slab is being lifted by a tree, and they come in to redo that, what do they do for remediation? Do they do anything to the root that's left?
You can, you can trim, you can trim that root down, you know, so some communities, we bring arborists in for that, other communities more leave that up to the discretion of the contractor, so there's things that they can do. Obviously, anytime you do that, you know, you know that that was there, you know that it will reestablish itself, whether it's three years, four years, 10 years, 15 years, you don't know, but, so you can trim that, you know, there's a good likelihood at some point in time that that slab will lift again. There's nothing you can do to, to make that stop forever, you know what I mean, there just isn't. So, again, it's that balance between the canopy and, and the sidewalk walkability.
I think it might be worth while for us to ask the tree board to look into what sort of remediation efforts could be done, you know, are there new technologies that help prevent the roots from growing as aggressively, anything like that, and they might be able to point us in some directions more, if they can.
All right. Any other questions on that, or comments, thoughts?
Those on the first piece.
Those on the first piece, so let's move on to second piece, which I guess is probably dependent on first piece. So, the discussion, the next part would be timing, when is the sidewalk repair, city properties, facilities, residential, commercial. In terms of a timeline, what is a reasonable timeline? Should we decide how we're going to do this? And it seems a special assessment at this point seems to make sense for a number of reasons, in terms of creating the best costs, giving people some time, getting them all upfront, and it's not practical or feasible for the city to pay for all of this on their own. If that were the case, what would the timeline look like?
Well, and I think, looking back on the budget, and Ginger and Matt may be able to, you know, we planned for that study, and then I think we tried to think about fronting some funds in a future fiscal year, which I believe was 1920 to get started, and I don't know what...
About $200,000?
$200,000 as a placeholder, just to say that, that was a start, and whether that, you know, so to me, you know, it would seem logical to follow that course with, with next fiscal year being potentially the start of, of having the program take shape, and starting to pay for it, and allocate the funds to do it. Now, whether that's $200,000 is, is the right number or not, you know, we have to decide. We've got some costs on city property, we've got some costs in Friday's section, you know, do we try to do, you know, a piece of both of those in the first year, or, or how we do? I think we've got to kind of look at that map again, or maybe try to split out how we might want to move forward with that. But I think, and that'll give us hopefully some time from a communication standpoint as well, to, to get the message out before July 1st hits. I mean, those are sort of my general thoughts on the timing.
How about Jack?
As far as city properties go, why don't we just include the city properties in the area where they're located? If we do an area, we do the city property in that area, such as your area over on Beacon, you know, do that with the residents there, and start it, instead of doing just a separate city properties, like just move through the city.
What are your thoughts on that, Matt? I mean, I...
Is there any particular area that's more impacted than others?
Yeah, I, I did not look at those results at that level to say, I mean, part of the concern is that you're brought aware of these things, you want to react quickly to address them. So I'd be worried if we took that approach back, and that might mean, you know, it's going to be year eight before we get to that problem that we saw.
Now, if it's something that's emergency, I'd say we do it. But my concern is, I don't want to go around the city and do all this, all the city properties with new sidewalks, and then the residents next door have comei sidewalks that we haven't got to yet. And they're going to get the impression that, you know, we're not looking out for the residents, we're looking out for the city, which in that case, we were. So that may not be the right thing to do. We, we go through an area, and we do it. Now, in the case of a serious, we've got a whole sidewalk, a serious strip out there, we got to at least put some maintenance money in there, patch it, or, or get a couple of your guys to put some cement in there and fix it, but I'd like to not separate the city from the residents.
Okay, I, I would agree with that. I think if there's some, I don't know what the sidewalk version of a Pazer system is to try to understand the relative, you know, goodness, you know, sidewalks, or whatever it is. And then just let the numbers dictate where we go, and you look at the averages, I still think having it by a region or a quadrant makes sense for economies of scale and communication, and they can have a roadmap, if you will, but the numbers drive where we go, and the dollars drive how fast we go, if that makes sense. And then, you know, we'll probably save this a lot throughout the day, but again, it's all about, again, about the communication, not just to that area that, for all the right reasons, is prioritized to, to go first, but to the, the city at large to say, "Here is the program." Do I have to multi-year program? Here's the general idea, we're going to start here, and then let the numbers drive us. But because we're, we're such a mobile community, folks walk around, they go to their friend's house, they visit with whoever, even if the resident doesn't live in that part of town, they might be affected by that as part of their journey, or walking to school, or something like that. So we want to make sure everybody's aware of what happens from day one, and then have a companion communication for the folks that are affected in here and now.
I think it comes down to, why are we doing this? Why are we talking about this? Safety issue, okay? This is for the safety purposes. So whether, as Jack mentioned, you, we certainly want to make sure that we are, that we're not just favoring city properties first, but other than safety. So if there are, if it's not a quadrant, but it's a significant safety risk, or significant safety issue, then we need to take care of it right away. I think wherever that is, across the community, across the city, wherever, those are the biggest risks, that's where we need to start and take care of. You know, whether they're all, you know, next door to each other in the same place or not. And then, I think when we go back and we're moving to the more general repairs, yes, certainly, if it's next to a city property or not, it doesn't matter, at that point, we're really going to, I think we need to target the highest safety priorities first. Enes?
I look at doing city properties first as a communication issue, because I can envision people saying, the, you know, "Oh, those flags by City Hall are horrible, but they're making me repair mine now," and they haven't gotten their own house in order first. So I can see an argument for doing the cities first. If we do not, we need to communicate very clearly that they will be done, and this, you know, it goes back to communication, we need to communicate it very clearly.
Yeah, I think that could be addressed if we just said, "The principle is, we, we start with the biggest safety issues first, wherever that be residential, commercial, business, city, I mean, this whole perspective." And then again, let the numbers, the assessment drive where we go, and let the dollars drive how fast we get there.
And have a schedule, look, these are, like the Pazer, these are our worst-rated areas, these are the slabs, these are the flags, we need to take care of first, take care of those, we need to have a schedule.
You couldn't give us a, you couldn't tell us what part of the city is worse unless we expanded the pilot you just did to the entire city at, you know, five times the cost, or four times the cost of what we just did. So I think we may have to just say, this is, you know, we don't know for sure if this is our most dangerous section, but this is the section we're starting here.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm hearing a couple of different discussions here that are a little bit, so, you know, we talked about addressing the highest safety ones first, potentially citywide, but, you know, that would mean having to expand on the study that's been done to be able to find those, as opposed to just, right now, we know Friday's section, reacting to Friday's section.
It doesn't, I didn't mean to invite it, I mean, citywide, we're right up front, I mean, whatever we have studied at that point, we would say, "In this region that we're in, okay, most pressing safety issues there."
With this study.
Right, to expand between the entire...
I get that.
Yeah, sorry.
If someone called in and said, "Hey, this one's really unsafe, and it's not in the area," and we're like, "Yeah, you're right, we include that one in, you know, that season's special assessment, even if it's out of the region."
We talked, somebody else brought that up, too, as a point to say, you know, how do we deal with those, because there would be some benefit. You know, if, if it didn't change the scope too much, I, you inherently think it wouldn't be that big of a deal, but, you know, knowing, and if we take section four, or section five, and knowing that that issue's probably similar to the other sections, if that gets it, what I'd be worried about is now the fuldring off the...
It's going to spin everywhere anyway.
Building's like, "Get mine, get mine," and the contractor's saying, "I can't be going 20 different places at the same time, guys, I, you know, my pricing is based on the bid and, and being in this area, and the ability to pour close by, as opposed to jumping around." I, I'd love to be able to think that, but the practical side says, boy, if somebody got wind of that, and then all of a sudden, the calls are just coming in because they're saying, "Wow, this is great." Well, now, the contractor can't even finish what he's done because he's traveling around so much in the other areas.
And agreed, and then maybe, again, that gets back to the communication, what do they do, right? So they raise their hand, or they identify, "Hey, this thing in front of my neighbor's house is really bad," and, but it's not, it's not Friday's section, or whatever it is. Maybe as part of the communication, or they can, we can work with them on all their techniques, spray paint it, or maybe there's some kind of thing they can do quickly to, to patch it up, or something.
And we are experimenting with, Ginger, he purchased a bucket of this stuff, a product that we're going to try out, that claims that it can be troweled in at very thin depths. We've all seen people concrete in those wedges, and you might get a year or two out of it before it chips, and then it comes off, "Well, this product is, is like that, but not like that," that claims that, that it can last a lot longer, and, boy, if they can get a, on their own, or they, or a little bit handy, they can mix it up, and for 50 or 60 bucks to wedge in something that gives them some additional time, and it actually stays there, then wow. So we're going to give it a shot, in, in an area where we can monitor it, and we'll see how it turns out.
Okay, because we, I'm a little bit chucky, but it's a serious issue, because we usually need to do code enforcement now, and without, and it'd be nice to get a timeline of the entire section, but we will have to decide if there's something that we're willing to accept from our residents under code enforcement that's lesser than full replacement, if we know the program's coming to them soon, and how long is soon, and there's, from a code enforcement question, that's, we've been sort of discussing this eternally as well, is, is what does that mean for when somebody does call in and say, "I just bit it on the sidewalk, it's heaved," you know, somebody's got to do something about this. And will we just let that resident come in and patch, or wedge, or, you know, and shave it off a little bit? What are we going to accept until we know that the full program is going to reach that section?
Yeah, along with that overarching principle of safety, I think there's the, it's the end here, right? There's the comprehensive program, which has methodology to it, and it moves in accordance with the plan, and it's predictable, it's communicable. And then there's a rapid response type of thing, too, that says, you know, because if somebody, if somebody does call, we don't want to say, "Oh, too bad, you know, we're going to be there in 2022," you know?
Hang in there.
Yeah, just don't walk that way. No, instead, we want to be able to offer them some tools, and, and have some services that we can provide in the short term. So I think, you know, it's that comprehensive strategy around, here's the approach we're going to take, and here's what you can do in the meanwhile.
All right, we are under five minutes here. As we wrap this up and look to, to move forward, is there anything else on this? We've had a robust conversation, we have some ideas on that, what would make sense to you and Derek, perspective? Matt?
We haven't talked about commercial, and we assumed that would be included in, in the areas as we go forward.
Yes.
Okay, that's covered.
Ross?
Yeah, at the risk of a, well, duh, moment, when, as with the millage now, it passes, I just want to make sure that as we know and figure out our response, where we're going to be doing it, if we have to go full reconstruct, that maybe we don't go in, fix a, put a bit of a sidewalk, go back in, tear everything out, or whatever, yeah. So just make sure we're kind of handling well on that.
Yeah, I think you have to have those, at least talking at some level with each other to make sure that you don't have a mass exodus, yeah, taken out of a bunch of new slabs.
And likewise, if it's on full, all city facilities, that would have been right around the same time that we're, the millage would be assessed, and I think you guys were right to kind of consider, like, well, they said this is going to be for the roads, all of a sudden, every city property's got new sidewalks. And so it's a fantastic, we're going to...
Okay.